Looking candidate debates and forums is central to the City Club's longstanding mission of informing the community about public affairs. This week's candidate forum will host six candidates running for Portland City Council to fill the seat being vacated by Commissioner Sam Adams. The candidates are Jeff Bissonette, John Branham, Mike Fahey, Amanda Fritz, Charles Lewis, and Chris Smith. Today's forum will be moderated by Dr. Sheila Martin of Portland State University. We have great corporate sponsors who make these forums possible, and our sponsors this quarter are Key Bank, Zimmer-Gunsel Frasca Architects, and the law firm of Schwab Williamson &amp; Wyatt. Please join me in thanking our sponsors. And now for our program. I'll introduce Sheila Martin, our moderator, who will introduce the candidates. We're fortunate in Portland to have an outstanding institution of higher learning right in the middle of the city. Our moderator today is from that organization, Portland State University. Dr. Sheila Martin is a director of the Institute for Portland Metropolitan Studies in the College of Urban and Public Affairs. She received her degree in economics and political science from Southern Illinois University, went on to get her master's degree at the University of Kentucky, and her PhD in economics from Iowa State University. Prior to joining Portland State, Sheila served as Governor Gary Locke's economic development advisor and worked as a senior economist at the Research Triangle Institute. In her spare time, she cooks, bikes, hikes, reads, and spends time with her husband and daughter. Before turning the program over to Sheila, I'd like to remind everyone that City Club endeavors to facilitate open and spirited discussion of important public issues. However, we ask you to contain your enthusiasm for our candidates and hold your applause until the end of the debate. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Sheila Martin.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm very honored to be part of the important process of encouraging public debate among our candidates for office and to assist in informing the citizens of Portland about where their candidates stand on the important issues facing our city. By being here today, all of you are demonstrating that you take seriously the rights and responsibilities of being a citizen and a voter. So again, thank you for being an active and respectful listener. Because of the number of candidates we have today, we'll have a slightly different format. The forum will have several sections. First, each of the candidates will give a three-minute opening statement. The candidates will give their opening statements in alphabetical order. Our timekeeper today is Ted Kaye. Following the opening statements, candidates will respond to questions submitted in advance of this meeting online by City Club members and the general public. A subcommittee of the City Club's program committee selected and edited the final set of questions. These are the only questions that will be asked today. There will be no questions from the floor. We will rely on the judgment of our distinguished panel of City Club members, who will be seated at the table in front of me, to decide whether or not the questions have been answered by the candidates. On our panel, we have Jody Heinz, Patty Tillot, and Naomi Cole. If two or more of these members raise their cards indicating that they feel a question has not been answered, I will restate the question and ask the candidate to reply again. Following the City Club's questions, each candidate will have the opportunity to ask one question of one other candidate. Following the rotation of candidate questions, each candidate will make a two-minute closing statement. Please be respectful of the candidates, and again, please hold all applause until the end of the program. And now I'll introduce the candidates. First, Jeff Bissonette. Jeff is a graduate of the University of Oregon with a degree of planning, public policy, and management. Jeff Bissonette has spent the last nine years as a consumer advocate with the Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. As a consumer advocate, he has worked to promote energy efficiency investments in renewable energy and energy assistance programs for low-income Oregonians. He has also spent nearly a decade working as a social service advocate to set up school breakfast programs, summer feeding programs, and community gardens. Mr. Bissonette has also served on the Multnomah County Chapter Steering Committee of the Oregon League of Conservation Voters and on the Board of Portland Community Media. John Branham is the current Director of Development for Portland Public Schools. A graduate of Corvallis High School and Washington and Lee University, Mr. Branham served more than two years in the Peace Corps in South Africa, and then returned to Washington DC to serve as the Program Director for the Higher Achievement Program, an out-of-school academic enrichment program for children in urban DC. Mr. Branham returned to Oregon in 2001 to attend the University of Oregon School of Law. In addition to serving as the Director of Development for Portland Public Schools, Mr. Branham has also been the president of his Neighborhood Association and a volunteer with the Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Mike Fahey has served two terms as an Oregon State Representative from 1995 to 1999, where he co-chaired the House Labor Committee and served on the Joint Senate-House Natural Resources Committee and the House Economic Development Subcommittee. A lifelong resident of Portland, Mr. Fahey attended North Catholic High School and Roosevelt High School, as well as Portland State University and Lewis &amp; Clark College. He served as the president, executive secretary, and business manager of numerous local labor unions, and he founded the Carpenter's Food Bank in 1983. After serving two terms in the legislature, he became the co-owner of Discovery Mortgage, a Portland small business. Amanda Fritz was born in England and graduated from Cambridge University with a degree in biological sciences. She moved to the United States in 1979 and to Portland in 1986. Ms. Fritz has since worked as a registered nurse in inpatient psychiatry at Oregon Health Sciences University and has served as a union steward for the Oregon Nurses Association. Ms. Fritz has been an active citizen in the local community in many ways, having co-founded and chaired the Tryon Creek Watershed Council, initiated and chaired the Citywide Parks Team Forum, volunteered as a tutor in Portland Public Schools, served on the city's Task Force on Neighborhood Involvement, and served as a commissioner on the Portland Planning Commission. Charles Lewis is the founder of Ethos, an award-winning nonprofit music center and school, and the co-founder with his wife of Portland Duck Tours. A graduate of the University of Portland and the John F. Kennedy School of Government, Mr. Lewis has also served as an intern for former U.S. Senator Mark Hatfield. As a member of the Peace Corps in the Congo, as a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity, as a legislative assistant in the Oregon Legislature, and as an ombudsman associate for our Portland Mayor Vera Katz. Chris Smith is a graduate of the Executive Program in Communication Strategy MBA of Boston University. Chris Smith is an internet technologist with Xerox Internet Marketing. Mr. Smith has been an activist in the Portland area for more than ten years, focusing on issues of transportation, neighborhood livability, and civic engagement. He has served on numerous advisory boards, committees, and organizations, including the Safe and Sound Streets Task Force, the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, the Mayor's Roundtable on the Central City, the Northwest District Association, and the Artist Repertory So now we'll start with the opening statements. Mr. Bissonette, please begin with your three-minute statement.
Thank you, and thank you for having us all here today. It's an honor to be here at the venerable institution that is the City Club. My name is Jeff Bissonette, and I'm running for Portland City Council, position number one. I'm running because I believe that Portland can be a city that works better for all of us. I believe that as Portlanders, we need to identify the handful of industries that will drive our economy over the next decade or two. I'm running focusing on issues of better environment, better employment, better education, and better accountability. I've spent the last ten years working as a consumer advocate for the Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. Most of my work has been focused down in the legislature, passing pro-consumer legislation and working on clean energy issues. My campaign is fueled by the optimism that I believe that Portlanders share across the city, in our city and our own ability to develop solutions to face the challenges that we encounter. As I said, I think that as Portlanders, we need to develop the industries that are going to drive our economy, and I want to use my background in clean energy issues in making that as a key economic driver and anchor for the city. I also believe that City Council needs to get outside of City Hall and reconnect with neighborhoods and communities throughout the city. I believe that by doing that, we increase civic engagement and we make neighborhoods, particularly in St. John's, outer east Portland, and even some of the inner southeast and northeast neighborhoods, feel more connected and more a part of the life of the city than they do today. To do that, I'm going to set up a series of neighborhood field offices of my office to make sure that I'm on the ground and knowing what is happening in those neighborhoods throughout the city. I'm actually going to not take the bold political move and not take my entire three minutes, and so we can move even more quickly to questions. Again, I'm happy to be here and look forward to the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branham.
Good afternoon, fellow City Club members. As a City Club member, it's an absolute delight to be here today. Thank you for your time and to all of the radio listeners that are out there. You know, this is an extraordinary group of candidates, I believe, and as you listen to the bios, I think that's self-evident. I've certainly enjoyed running for City Council, and part of that is because of the cadre of folks that you have, and I really think that's due in large part to our publicly-financed system here in Portland. And this is an extraordinary race, and I really appreciate City Club's support of voter-owned elections. It gives Portlanders, like all of you, an opportunity to choose from a great group of folks, and so to all my fellow candidates, as this is, I think, the last debate, it's been a pleasure running. So you heard earlier a little bit more about my bio. There are a couple of things I wanted to highlight in addition to those things. Part of it is that there are only two of us that grew up here in the state of Oregon, and I'm one of them, having grown up in Corvallis. And I did that while being raised by my father, who was a janitor, who in the mid-eighties ran for Corvallis's City Council and won, and was re-elected. And that was powerful, I thought, because it was, you know, Corvallis is one of the most well-educated cities in America, and here was a janitor who was making significant contributions. And so as a young boy, I walked the streets of Corvallis and door-knocked for my father and learned the ropes of running for office, and later sat in City Council meetings where I watched him make an extraordinary difference. And that has never been lost on me, and it's certainly part of why I'm running for Portland City Council, to make an extraordinary difference in a great city. One of the other experiences I wanted to highlight in addition to, of course, having graduated from law school and served in the Peace Corps and worked for the United Nations and served as Portland Public Schools Director of Development, is my work as chair of the Arbor Lodge Neighborhood Association, one of our 95 neighborhood associations here in Portland. I was the youngest chair, and when I joined, we were averaging eight members to our monthly meetings, which is not uncommon here in Portland, unfortunately. But within two months of my tenure, we were in the 50s, and we sustained that through the rest of my term, and we did that because of significant involvement. So there are a couple of reasons why I'm running for Portland City Council. One is to have a dramatic impact on our schools and education in this city. The second reason is to be far more aggressive about reducing our carbon footprint and our environment. And the third is to support economic development, particularly among our small and medium-sized businesses. Again, it's a delight to be here. I look forward to the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. Now, Mr. Fahey.
Good afternoon. Thanks for hosting us. I have to agree with John. Citizens are lucky to have all these great candidates. The only reason I'm running is I feel I have the most experience to be on the City Council, or I wouldn't be running. I was born in Vamport. I was one of nine children. When the flood hit, the citizens of Portland opened up their homes to, at the time, my mom and dad had seven kids, and that, like all the rest of thousands of people, Portland took care of them and put us up, and my mother raised us with the idea that you give back more than you receive, so I've tried to spend my life trying to give back more than what I received, because I think the city of Portland has been good to my family. I'm married, have four children, eight grandchildren, and I just want to see Portland progress. I think there's a lot of issues out there we have to address, trying to keep business in this town. When I started my family, the first thing I needed was a job. I don't know, the concept or perception seems to be that business is the bad guy. I don't know where that comes in, because it's kind of nice to have an employer, and I like to see some of them stay in the city. So I think like with the taxes and the fees, these small business people are working 10, 12, 14 hours a day trying to meet, just make ends meet. Gas is at $3.60, and they're putting it on their credit card and paying the interest, they're actually paying $4.25. And the medical cost of people that come to my food bank, I mean, there's not a lot of excess money. I'd like to see a moratorium on fees and taxes for a while till the economy turns around, because it's pretty hard to keep those doors open and make that payroll. In the legislature, I introduced legislation that the voters of Oregon passed, Measure 56, to protect landowners, passed by 871,000 votes. My life has been taken care of as a small person. My dad told me when I was growing up, when I got into the labor movement, he said, "The day you forget where you came from is the day you become worthless." And I never wanted to be worthless, so I never forgot where I came from, and I know what it's like to punch a time clock and worry about losing health care, trying to keep your mother in your home. So I guess maybe I'm simplistic, but I'm a pretty simple person. But what you see is what you get. Nobody ever told me of going backwards on anything I ever told them. I worked at the employers to keep 2,000 shipyard jobs here, and we worked as a partnership with the Congressional delegation. So I have the experience of training people. The dropout rate in this city is terrible. I have a plan to take care of that and train these young men and women, and we have the money to do it, it's just how we allocate it. So I'm looking forward to stepping in. I still got four good more years in me, so I know some of the newspapers say I don't have any energy, but we'll go out and lift some weights and we'll find out who has the energy.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Now I'll turn to Ms. Fritz.
Good afternoon. I'm Amanda Fritz, and I was born and raised in England, but I feel I grew up here in Portland, Oregon. Came here in 1986 when I was seven months pregnant with our first child, and had two more in rapid succession while my husband was in residency at the Oregon's, which was then OHSU. And for 17 years, I've been a parent in Portland Public Schools, and that's part of how I grew into the person that I am. My youngest child is about to graduate from Wilson High School, and I believe I'm the only candidate who's a primary parent of a minor child at this point. It's been quite challenging. And I was part of the OHSU nurses' strike in 2001 to 2002, where for 56 days, we walked the picket line to stop the hospital from laying off nurses and endangering patients' lives, and we won a living wage for nurses, not only at OHSU but throughout Oregon, and I'm proud of that. While I was walking the picket line, I was also on the Planning Commission and dealing with all of the issues that the Planning Commission makes recommendations to council on, many of the same decisions that the council then votes on. And I realized that we need a voice for grassroots citizens on the City Council. Two years ago, I was the only community candidate to qualify and stay qualified for public campaign financing. Thank you to the City Club for your advocacy for that program. This year, I was again the first candidate to qualify, and I collected donations in 91 of the city's 95 neighborhoods, including every neighborhood east of 82nd. And I believe it's a revolutionary program that allows us to open up democracy and forge new partnerships. I'm running for City Council because I want to focus on providing basic services within the city's core mission in all 95 neighborhoods, and I believe we can do that by using taxpayers' money wisely. We have a $3 billion city budget, and we need to make sure that every penny is spent wisely and prioritizing and sticking to budgets. We need to focus on our local economy. We need to look at ways to provide jobs and support small businesses and large businesses, and I have a plan to do that. And we need to support our schools. They are vital to our neighborhoods, they are vital to our economic development base, as well as to students and families and educators, and you will not find a more passionate champion for Portland Public Schools, all five districts, than I am. Want to close by just reading some of the endorsements, because there are many, we are all good candidates up here, and there are others who are more eloquent speakers than I, but I'd like to read you an endorsement from one of my heroes, Senator Eval Louise Gordly. "Amanda Fritz has been building relationships and bridges across communities for years. Portland needs elected leaders with integrity and the demonstrated ability and commitment to effectively address the needs of underserved populations and communities. She will continue to be a unifying voice that honors the needs of all Portlanders." I have built community, and I've built relationships over the last 22 years of service here in Portland, and looking forward to the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Mr. Lewis, your opening statement.
Great. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Charles Lewis, and I'll give you a little bit of background about myself and then tell you why I'm running. I am 36 years old. I am married to Sarah Lewis, who is here today. She's the pastor of Piedmont Presbyterian Church, and in about six weeks, we're expecting our first child, a baby girl, June 20th, so I'm very excited about that. I am currently the Executive Director of Ethos Music Center. It's a nonprofit music center that I started up 10 years ago that brings music education back to 2,200 kids every year. You know, as a graduate student at Harvard University, I was working on my master's thesis, and I kept hearing about all these just terrible budget cuts that were destroying music education programs in our schools. So when graduation time came, I flew back to Portland, slept on a friend's couch, and started up Ethos Music Center on my credit card. We started with three volunteers, 10 kids in a classroom. You know, two months later, we had 75 kids, then 150 kids, then 300 kids, and it just took off because we were feeling a really critical need for kids in our schools. Today, we reach 2,200 kids a year with music education. Last year, we had 78 employees on our payroll and are just filling a critical need. And it's something that really differentiates me from a lot of the other candidates, is I've actually run a business that is the size of some of our bureaus in the city of Portland right now. As I mentioned, I was a graduate student at Harvard University. I've got a master's degree in public policy. Prior to that, I was a Peace Corps volunteer in the Congo. I helped dig wells for fresh drinking water for Congolese villagers. And prior to that, I was a student at the University of Portland where I studied political science. I helped direct the fundraising for the Martin Luther King statue that's in front of the Oregon Convention Center, and I served as an ombudsman associate for the mayor of Portland. And in between the first and second year at Harvard, I helped build houses for Habitat for Humanity. I'm endorsed by the Portland Tribune that really cited my business experience, because we're headed for some really difficult financial times here as a community, and they cited my business experience as something that really differentiated myself from the other candidates. I've also received the sole endorsement for Stand for Children, and they cited that I would be the best advocate for children's issues here in the city of Portland for this position. The issues I'm most concerned about begin with affordable housing. You know, it's the first time in modern history we have a migration of families moving out of Portland because they can't afford to live here anymore. Families and seniors are being priced out of Portland, and for me, I think it's just absolutely outrageous that the city of Portland is subsidizing million-dollar condos and families and seniors are being forced out of Portland. I think we need to make some serious changes in directions and priorities here in Portland. In addition, getting back to basics, you know, I kicked off my campaign filling in potholes on our dirt road in front of our house. I think we need to really look at the fairness and equity with city spending and make sure that all of our neighborhoods receive a fair distribution of the city's resources, and I'll look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Smith, your opening statement.
Well, thank you. It's great to be back here at City Club. This is a little bit different role for me. I'm more used to asking the questions, or even wielding the dreaded question mark, but I'm delighted to be here and I appreciate the opportunity. I came to this region 20 years ago. I came here following a job at Techtronics, thinking I'd be here for a couple of years and then head back east. Instead, I fell in love with Oregon, I fell in love with Portland. A few years later, I fell in love with Stacy, and we raised two children here. Amanda, we just missed you on the parent of a minor child. Our oldest turned 18 in February. But ever since figuring out that this was the place where I was going to make my stand in life, I've been working to give back and make this a better community. That's taken a variety of forms. It's looked like chairing Artist Repertory Theater as they made their bold move out of the third floor of the YWCA into the beautiful facility they occupy now. It's looked like serving as a neighborhood board member and committee chair for more than a decade. Working on transportation policy at all levels, from neighborhoods to the city, to creating regional transportation choices, helping develop policies to manage regional growth, fighting ballot measures to protect the state budget against the likes of Bill Seismore and Don McIntyre, fighting with my friend Bud Clark to preserve our unique form of government here in Portland, and fighting for voter-owned elections. I'd like to take a little bit of the credit for why we have such a great slate of candidates up here, and helping Commissioner Adams pass lobbyist registration here in Portland to shine light on special interest in City Hall. But I'm proudest of the work I've done here at City Club, participating in research on campaign finance reform, on managing growth here in Portland, helping City Club's advocacy efforts around affordable housing, community policing, PDC reform, early childhood development, and more. And I'm running to make Portland more sustainable, more sustainable in a number of dimensions, environmentally, so we can be the example of how cities in this country can help head off or deal with the impacts of peak oil and global warming, sustainable socially and economically, so we produce good jobs and have a city that's affordable for people of all income levels, and it remains possible to raise a family here in the city. And in some ways, most important to me, that we sustain our tradition of citizen input here in Portland. I believe that citizen input is one of the reasons that Portland is the great place that it is. As I testified last night at a city budget hearing, I think that citizen involvement is our greatest renewable resource here in Portland, and I'm running to make sure that we continue that tradition here and that we make that opportunity available to the new, more diverse communities here in Portland, so that all of us participate in making this a great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We will now move to the portion of the program where I will ask the questions prepared in advance by City Club members and the general public. The candidates to whom the question is directed will have 60 seconds to respond to the questions. Each of the other candidates will have 45 seconds to respond. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. The first question goes to Mr. Smith. "Mr. Smith, current city officials have said that improving Portland's business environment is one of the city's highest priorities. Do you believe any real progress is being made now? And if elected, what would you do to improve Portland's business environment?"
Thank you. Well, you know, first, I'd like to say that I think we're engaged in some negative self-talk here in the community, that this is a bad environment for business. I don't believe that's true. I think Portland is a great place to do business. We are not significantly competitively disadvantaged against any other city our size in the country, but I do agree that we need to keep making it better. I think one of our clear focuses has to be on small business. I'm delighted that the Association of Portland Neighborhood Business Associations now has a full-time executive director. I see him here in the room. That's great. Small business now has a better voice at the table in shaping policy here in Portland. And I think we need to keep working on streamlining regulation. Business needs clarity and certainty to succeed. I think some of our regulatory processes are still too complex. Not that the goals of the regulation are inappropriate, but the processes to enforce them need to be made simpler and more transparent to businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, your response.
You know, the small business question actually really separates myself and Mike Fahey from the rest of the candidates, because we've actually run small businesses. I've run Ethos Music Center. In addition, my wife and I owned the Portland Duck Tours up until just recently, which we sold because baby on the way and campaign and everything. But it is really difficult to do business here in Portland. From, you know, even alarm permit for your facility costs five times as much for a business as it does for a household, and I think that's just wrong. I think we need to, you know, small businesses drive the economy here in Portland. We need to do more to empower them to employ our citizens and make a living wage jobs for people here in Portland.
Thank you. Ms. Fritz, your response.
Could you repeat the question, please?
"Current city officials have said that improving Portland's business environment is one of the city's highest priorities. Do you believe any real progress is being made now? If elected, what would you do to improve Portland's business environment?"
Yes, I believe progress is being made, and I will, this is one of my top priority Yes, I believe progress is being made, and I will -- it's one of my top priorities, so I will definitely focus on improving the economy. I have many strategies outlined on my campaign website, including, first of all, ensuring that the economic development proposals and projects are directly and measurably tied to creating family wage jobs in Portland, retaining and growing the employment base, and taking advantage of Portland's unique benefits. As a city commissioner, I will help to recruit companies to come to Portland. Companies want -- they don't want to only talk to a Portland Development Commission staff member. They want to see a city commissioner. And you won't see a more passionate advocate for making and improving the business advocate, the business atmosphere, and for living in Portland than me.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey?
I think Sam Adams did a good job of going visiting 100 businesses in 100 days. I think that was a step in the right direction. I also think that there's a lot of things like the permit process, things that slow down business. One that gets me is our transportation system at Columbia Crossing. Trucking companies are getting six hours production out of eight hours' work. The other thing that always got me was the Multnomah County personal property tax. You buy a piece of equipment for $50,000, then you pay taxes on 250% of it instead of 100%. So, I mean, there's a lot of things out there that's different that I think should be addressed.
Thank you. Mr. Branham, your response?
Yes. So I do agree that supporting our businesses is critical for Portland. I think the city council and the city has done a great job of improving the climate. There are a couple of things I would do to further that. Number one, I think it's critical that all commissioners are supportive of a business-friendly environment rather than just one commissioner. Number two, I would agree with Chris that the support for APMBA is essential, and I'd like to see those dollars increased. I think having S-BAC and the SBDC that are fully integrated into our support for businesses is also essential, and I look forward to supporting those.
Thank you. Mr. Bezenet?
Thank you. I think that there has been progress being made to help the business environment, but it's been halting at best. I think that there needs to be an ongoing conversation between the city and the business community and not just when trouble hits or when things are melting down. In terms of what I would do to help the business climate, because we are very much a small business community, I believe that there needs to be increased resources to help Portlanders start, grow, and sustain locally-owned businesses. And I would focus resources and facilitate resources to direct into existing microloan programs to help small businesses start up.
Thank you. The second question is directed to Mr. Lewis. Portland Parks and Recreation is the largest landowner in Portland. It also is the second-largest public agency serving children behind Portland Public Schools District Number One, and it provides recreation and community activities for tens of thousands of Portland residents. Tell us what you think of the current distribution of parks and recreation facilities in Portland as well as trends in park funding.
I think in general, we can improve the distribution of resources towards parks. My wife and I live in the Colley neighborhood, and we have a park there that was put on a landfill. And actually, they have to shut the park down three hours every day to let off methane so the park doesn't explode. And we're grateful for a park, but, you know, it would be great to have more resources, again, fairly distributed throughout the city of Portland. And I think Senator -- or, sorry, Commissioner Leonard has made some great improvements with the Water Bureau's properties. He's turned those into parks. And I think if we think creatively like that, we can increase the amount of green space throughout the city of Portland.
Thank you. Ms. Fritz?
I've been working extensively with Portland Parks and Recreation over the last several years. With the Parks Bureau and the Parks Foundation, I helped get the Holly Farm Park purchased and improved and opened in just the last few years. And that's the first new park in a recently annexed area to be improved in decades. It's in the middle-income neighborhood of West Portland Park in southwest Portland. I also worked with the Colley neighborhood to get a land use decision around Sacagawea Park that improved the park facilities there. As far as trends in parks, we need to make sure that we fund parks as a basic city service in all 95 neighborhoods. And I'm glad to see that the mayor's budget proposes funding parks operations through the general fund. That's definitely a trend that I will continue to support, and we're going to need to look for increased revenues to buy and improve parks in all 95 neighborhoods.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Fahey?
Oh, I support the parks 100%. I spent 19 years doing youth program, fast pitch softball, baseball. My concern, too, for the parks is they have to be part of the budget. I mean, it's a big part of the neighborhoods that focus around parks. My main concern is the safety. Most people are afraid to let their kids out of sight, and we don't have enough community policing in these parks. It's a lot different than when I was growing up. You didn't have to worry about your child going to a park and, you know, without being there watching them every second of the way because safety's a big thing.
Thank you. Mr. Branham?
Sure. I think parks are essential to Portland's livability. It's one of the things that defines us around the country and around the world. I certainly am looking forward to continuing to support parks' financial contributions through the general fund. One of the strategies I'd like to look to is as we rebuild Portland Public Schools and the other schools throughout Portland, that we think about stacking some of those facilities with affordable housing as well as some organizational space for the arts community so that we can create new green space to make room for the 165,000 new Portlanders that are coming so that they have an opportunity to play and enjoy Portland's parks.
Thank you. Mr. Bezenet?
It's hard to come out against parks, but I think that what we need to focus on is increasing park availability and park space so that no matter where you live in Portland, what neighborhood, that you're within easy-walking distance of a park. Secondly, while I join my colleagues in supporting funding for parks through the general fund, that is going to be increasingly difficult, especially as the park levy runs out. And so there's going to be increased pressure on funding of parks. And lastly, I think we need to figure out how to reduce our inputs in terms of pesticides and water in maintaining our parks.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, your response?
Thank you. You know, I think you only have to look at the Coalition for Liveable Futures Regional Equity Atlas to realize that there are definitely parts of our city, parts of our region that are definitely underserved with parks. I'm glad we're making some progress. I had a small part to play in passing Metro's Green Spaces Bond Measure, which will provide both natural space protection at the edges of the region and parks in urban areas matching with local jurisdictions. The adoption of a greatly increased SDC, System Development Charge, for parks will also go a long way toward improving park facilities as we grow, although there was some controversy that perhaps is not vetted as well with the whole community as it could have been.
Thank you. The next question is for Amanda Fritz. Ms. Fritz, so far, nearly every prediction made by critics of the South Waterfront development have come true. Traffic getting in and out of the neighborhood is challenging. The city's share of the costs are ballooning. Condos aren't selling at expected rates, and few of the promised biotech jobs have materialized. What went wrong, and what have you learned from it?
Oh, my. As a mother, I have really tried not to say "I told you so." I served on the Portland Planning Commission during the adoption of that plan, and these things were all very clear during that adoption. Now, some of the things that I predicted in terms of the trams overrun, in retrospect, you know, the tram is a good thing. It has connected the hill and South Waterfront, and it is providing the transportation between those two campuses of OHSU, which is a valued institution of learning and research and service provision in our community. But the other things, the transportation problems, the fact that the bioscience was never going to develop in the way that was predicted, that was very clear in the research that was presented to the Planning Commission. And when I asked, "Why are we comparing our potential for bioscience with North Carolina and Pittsburgh rather than Seattle or San Francisco?", the answer was, "We didn't look." If I'm on the city council, I'll be asking those questions early in the process and making sure that we get better answers early in the process.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey, your response?
Well, I mean, the whole thing with the condos and the development falling apart, I mean, you had a superficial low interest rate to drive the economy nationally. They dropped it down low. They were giving people's loans on what I call liar poker loans, whoever could lie the most got the loan. And I think, as far as the roads go, I think it's time we start using the gas tax for roads for a while so we can get them. That's why we have such a back supply of roads and repair is because we haven't been using the gas tax for roads. Everything else comes along, we use it on that. So I think we ought to try using the roads for a while, and maybe they'd start improving.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Mr. Branham?
So in terms of what I think we've learned on Southwest Waterfront, one of them is that we need to balance being aggressive and being visionary with also being pragmatic. You know, we have sort of a history of trying to be bold, and I applaud that. And I think we also need to realize that it's critical for us to look at national and regional economic factors. I think a lot of what we're seeing right now with the mortgage crisis was candidly predictable. And I think it's essential, then, that we look at those national and regional drivers as we're making decisions about how bold we want to be going forward on projects that are similar to Southwest Waterfront.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. Mr. Bezenet?
I think that one of the things that we learned is that when we have commitments in a development project, as, for instance, to affordable housing, to park space and green space, that we have to make sure those commitments are followed through as part of the overall development of the project. And I think we've learned to be a little bit more cautious as we move into large developments like this. However, I think that we now have the potential for a neighborhood in the South Waterfront, and I think that as time goes along, we're going to find that that area of town is going to be an asset, and we'll be -- we'll have been glad that we developed it.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, your response?
Well, thank you. I'll take a little bit of credit. I serve on the board of Portland Streetcar, Inc., and the streetcar component of South Waterfront was delivered on time under budget. But I think while the aspiration for South Waterfront to turn a brownfield into a vibrant new neighborhood and economic hub for the city is a great one, and I think it's still a great one, the city has never fully identified all the financial resources that would be required, and that's what we're seeing the impact of. Major components of the plan, the affordable housing, the greenway are now scheduled so far out that one wonders if they're really a meaningful component of the plan anymore. And I think that's the lesson to be learned, is to make sure you have the resources to implement your vision.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis, your response?
I think the main problem with the South Waterfront was philosophical approach to the process. You know, people who defend the million-dollar subsidies for the condos and everything say, "Well, you invest in these million-dollar condos, and then eventually the development will reach, you know, the little guy." And it's classic trickle-down economics. And I've said over and over, "I'm tired of being trickled on," and I think we need to invest directly in, you know, working families and individuals here in Portland. And we've got some proposals that I can talk about more in depth later when we talk about affordable housing.
Thank you. The next question is directed to Mr. Fahey. Mr. Fahey, according to the city of Portland's 2007 Resident and Business Survey, the residents of 10 East and Southeast neighborhoods consistently rate their neighborhood livability and local government's overall performance lower than do the residents of the rest of the city. Name three things you would do to improve neighborhood livability and/or government performance in East Portland.
A lot of the conditions out there, they've been neglected. Coming from St. John's, I know what it's like to get dumped on. We had this -- we got the sewage treatment plant. We had to dump. A lot of the neighborhoods are not in the core, and they don't get the services. A lot of the -- go back to the dropout rate in these neighborhoods with the quality, what their perception is. There's a lot of correlation between household income and the dropout rate. And I think a lot of people out there, and they overdo the subsidized housing in these areas, and it should be spread out. There are 95 neighborhoods. They shouldn't concentrate all the subsidized housing in these neighborhoods. And if you look at the neighborhoods you're talking about, they'll have a higher level of subsidized housing. So I would spread out the subsidized housing.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Branham?
I've got two questions.
I'm sorry. Let me restate the question. The panel does not believe that you've adequately addressed the question. According to the city of Portland's 2007 Resident and Business Survey, the residents of 10 East and Southeast neighborhoods consistently rate their neighborhood livability and local government's overall performance lower than the residents of the rest of the city. Name three things you would do to improve neighborhood livability or government performance in East Portland.
I would take PDC money to those areas, help them improve it. I'd put community policing in there because a lot of them, with the light rail that's going through some of these communities. And I'd also go out there and get them some streets and sidewalks.
Okay. Mr. Branham, your response?
Great. So I'd like to actually put forward four things. The first one is, I think Portland City Council needs to rotate its city council meetings throughout Portland, so I'd like to see us at least once a month head out to a different neighborhood and have the meetings there. Number two, I'd like to support, you know, Safe, Sound, and Green, and, most importantly, providing safe intersections in those neighborhoods where they are most dangerous, east of 82nd. Number three, work hard to increase parks and green space in the outerlying neighborhoods. And number four, partner with our schools to improve the quality of education in those far-reaching neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. Mr. Bezenet?
I think that, as I mentioned in my opening comments, there are a lot of neighborhoods, but particularly the outer neighborhoods, that do not feel like they're a part of the life of the city. And so I think that the city council does need to reconnect with those communities and neighborhoods in those areas. The first thing I would do is set up neighborhood field offices so that I would be on the ground. The second thing is to provide increased support to the small business community in those areas. And thirdly, oh, thirdly, I would support the -- and be part of the support of the East County Action -- or East Portland Action Plan.
Thank you. Mr. Bezenet. Mr. Smith, your response?
Well, I was the only candidate to correctly identify in the Lament Week pop quiz that it was, in fact, Powellhurst Gilbert that identified themselves as having the lowest livability in the city. I would continue to work for the adoption of the Safe, Sound, and Green Streets program. I've been a member of the executive committee for that effort, and will campaign for it when it's on the ballot in November, to, you know, have basic infrastructure like sidewalks on all the busy streets in East Portland. I would work to get the legislature to give Portland the ability to put a design overlay on those neighborhoods, which we enjoy in many of the West Side neighborhoods, so that we can make sure that new development is responsive to the character of the neighborhood. That's one of the largest complaints that I've heard in those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis?
There's a number of things we can do. First off, I think there's a great new thing that PDC is looking at right now. As you know, city council had set aside 30% of all of the urban renewal money to go towards affordable housing. And PDC, I've been pushing for this for the entire election, to have PDC give that money to, like, the Bureau of Housing and Community Development or another organization to allow them to create the affordable housing. So I think that's a great first step, and they're heading in that direction. Fairly distributed affordable housing throughout the city of Portland. Right now, it's getting lumped into East, far East Portland, and a lot of residents are worried about it there. And then also, get back to basics, you know, fill in the potholes on the streets and focus on everyday problems and everyday people throughout Portland.
Thank you. Ms. Smith -- Ms. Fritz, excuse me, your response?
I've been working with the folks in East Portland for over 10 years, with Alicia Reese, who's a member of the Parkers School Board. I started the Citywide Parks Team, which brings parks advocates together to realize that we need parks in every neighborhood of the city. By working together, we can push for that. So I will work to provide basic services in all 95 neighborhoods, including public safety, which is a great concern to folks on the Max Line especially. And we can do more in land use issues around the station communities to provide eyes on the street and better security on TriMet. I will work with the Land Division Code, having my experience on the Planning Commission. We need to consider a moratorium on flaglot development in East Portland, and I will work to end some of the downtown URA's urban renewal areas so that the money goes back to the school districts in the appropriate manner rather than starting satellite urban renewal districts.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Branham. Mr. Branham, the city is facing a multimillion-dollar backlog for road maintenance. How will you address it?
Oh, you gave me the softball, I see. You know, I think this is an ongoing challenge, right? You know, Bud Clark established some clear lines of financial support for our roads, and over the years, we have gotten away from that. And that's been difficult because now those dollars are allocated to other basic services. I think what we've got to do is, as we have bumps in the economy, positive bumps, we need to start absorbing those dollars into road improvements and begin to, once again, allocate clear lines of financial support for our infrastructure. And we've got to do it over time steadily so that we're not taking away from the services that we've gotten used to in other bureaus such as police, fire, safety, and water, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Bezenet, your response?
First, I support the Safe, Sound, and Green Streets proposal to bring all of the street infrastructure up to at least fair condition, if not good condition. Right now, it is costing us money. If we do not reinvest in our infrastructure and Right now, it is costing us money if we do not reinvest in our infrastructure and bring it up to spec. And then, the failing of the Safe, Sound, and Green Streets proposal is that it does not define how, on a going-forward basis, we are going to maintain our infrastructure. And so I think that is one of the first things that the city council needs to address, and it needs to happen no matter what. I don't think we can wait for a bump in the economy. And one of the proposals I'd like to see on the table is going back and using a portion of the utility franchise fee going towards street maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Well, let's revisit briefly how we got here. The legislature has not raised the gas tax since 1993, and the buying power of gas tax dollars now less than 70 cents versus what it was in 1993. And the city council did direct that 28% of the franchise fee should go to transportation. The city council then promptly ignored that in light of the pressures created by Measure Five. So we're digging out of two big holes. I've been intimately involved in the Safe, Sound, and Green Streets effort. That needs to happen, and we need to stay in the legislature. Safe, Sound, and Green Streets is not sufficient by itself. We need at least a 12-cent increase in the state gas tax over about six years in order to provide the rest of the funding, just to get us back to level.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis?
I agree that the gas tax is a big part of the problem. You know, it's 24 cents a gallon right now. It's not a percentage, and I think it should be actually a percentage of the cost, you know, to bring more revenue in. In addition, I think we need to be more responsible with the money we have. For example, I run Ethos Music Center on the corner of Killingsworth and Williams. We received a letter from the city saying, you've got cracks in your sidewalk, you need to fix them, or we're going to give you a $6,000 bill to do it. So we did. We, you know, paid for the repairs ourselves, like we should have, and fixed the repairs. Now, it turns out, in a couple of months, the Killingsworth Street Plan is going to come through and rip out all of those sidewalks that we just repaired. And it doesn't make sense, and I think we can be smarter with our limited amount of resources.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Fritz?
We have a $3 billion city budget, and providing streets and sidewalks and maintaining them is a city function according to the charter. We need to pay for the basic things first before we pay for things that might be nice to have, which we can't afford. And we need a plan, which is probably going to be a 30- or 40-year plan for attacking the infrastructure deficits that we have in transportation, and just making sure that we pay for them little by little. When my first son was born 22 years ago, we started setting away money for college, so that we would have it there. And I think that's how we need to plan for this deficit, the same way in environmental services. We pay high sewer bills right now, but we only have a $5 to $7 million backlog of sewer maintenance that we need to fund, because that's been, we've been doing it all along.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Mr. Fahey?
Well, you know, the streets didn't get like this overnight. It's years of neglect and money being allocated for other things. I'm opposed, when the economy's in a downturn, going out assessing anybody, anything, as a way of increase taxes. I mean, on the sewer bill and having the small business pay hundreds of dollars a month extra on a sewer bill when they're already struggling, I definitely need them. I think if there's any surplus, it ought to be, like we had this year, it should be allocated to streets and sidewalks. But I don't see going out in this kind of environmental, with the economy the way it is, taxing anybody any extra. They're struggling the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. The next question is for Mr. Bezenet. Mr. Bezenet, Mayor Potter recently released his proposed budget for the next fiscal year. Please give us your analysis of the proposed budget and explain any changes you would make.
So do I have to use the whole 90 seconds? I think that Mayor Potter issued an election-year budget and focused on, tried to focus on what he considered basic services, but ignored several areas that are, that were not, or that have been long-term commitments to, for the city. One is the resources dedicated to the 10-year plan to end homelessness. For instance, he did not choose to allocate even a small amount of money for Project Homeless Connect, which is a very successful program that is a vital part of the 10-year plan to end homelessness. And I think that we need to make sure that all of the city's priorities and commitments are met, even in an election year. And that's how I would change the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenet. Mr. Smith, your response?
Well, I think I would agree with the assessment. This is a political budget in an election year. You know, the Safe, Sound, and Green Streets, 89-member stakeholder committee, after it was clear that Safe, Sound, and Green would not be adopted this summer, asked council to make a down payment on that effort with $4 million to reduce the backlog of transportation maintenance in the city. And the mayor elected not to fund that, with the exception of one project for a little over $1 million. I was a little bit heartened that Mayor Potter responded to the arts community and funded the Arts Partners Program at $150,000, which focuses arts in our schools. And I testified at the budget hearing last night, seeking ongoing funding for the Minority and Leadership Academy within the Office of Neighborhood Involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis?
Well, I'll highlight one particular part of the budget, focused on the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center. There, they have been funded by the City of Portland for quite a while, about $80,000. And that portion of the funding was pulled from them, and it's been just an incredible resource for the community, especially in North Portland, and I would love to see that funded as well. I do appreciate the mayor's focus on getting back to basics, and especially calling neighborhood. You know, we don't have any sidewalks on our major streets there, and I definitely appreciate that back-to-bos, basics focus.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Fritz?
I also was glad to see the emphasis on core services, including nearly $5 million for public safety, 3.5 million for streets, and 2.7 million for parks operations. One issue I have with the parks budget is that the facilities planning, including planning for Mount Tabor Reservoirs and Park, was underfunded. I am distressed by the lack of institutional memory, even short-term memory, that we've had problems with facilities planning and with engaging with the neighborhood there. This is a breach of trust to not fund that program properly. Very encouraged to see 1.8 million for Portland Development Commission small business grants, and also very glad to see a decrease in money for jails and an increase money for treatment in the Project 57, which looks after folks who have drug and alcohol addictions.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Mr. Fahey?
I think the budget, for the most part, is realistic, but I think the community policing part of it should be increased, as far as out in the neighborhoods. I mean, like I said, in the parks and the attitude out there, when I was growing up, we knew who the police officer was. Somebody got in trouble, they knew exactly. And I think that's part of the problem, is like with the Multnomah County, I'm going to get that question mark again, but cutting all the funding for mental health. The police are having to deal with mental health issues on a daily basis, and I think that, I think the city ought to get into the, a little bit of the mental health business in the budget. That's the only thing I would recommend. It's out of the scope of the city, it falls under the county. I understand that, but I think the city needs to do more to address the mental health issues in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Mr. Branham?
So I would concur with my colleagues that this was a, sort of a political budget, if you will. Three thoughts specifically. Number one, as one of the founding members of Arts Partners, which is a citywide initiative to support art integration in our schools, I was disappointed that the budget was cut. However, we worked hard, and we've got that $150,000 back in there. Secondly, I'm very concerned about the cut in BHCD's budget of 1.6 million. I think that we need to take care of our most vulnerable citizens during our most difficult times. So to me, that cut does not make sense. But I do support the increased support for Project 57.
Thank you. Now, we're going to turn to the part of the program where each candidate will have the opportunity to ask one other candidate a question. Questions must be asked in 30 seconds. The candidate to whom the question is directed will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have the option of a 30-second rebuttal. We'll begin with Ms. Amanda Fritz.
Well, I am very honored to be amongst the candidates here, and one of the people I've most enjoyed getting to know is Mike Fahey, who has been just a wonderful stalwart of our community. So the question that I have to ask you, Mike, is, with your experience in the legislature and our lack of institutional memory that I just mentioned, what things should the city of Portland be lobbying for in the legislature, which we haven't in the past?
Now, they've tried, they've lobbied about everything in the past, but...
Why should we be emphasizing?
What do you mean, would be successful?
Yes.
Well, depending on the state budget, but I think that the city, I think what the city really has to go down and lobby is, down in Salem, there's a resentment around the state. Everybody here thinks Portland is Big Brother, and we never communicate around the state, and that's why you have so much animosity down there, is before we do things, we don't go out and actually ask the rest of the counties and city what we vote here, how it's going to impact the rest of them, whether it's jobs in the timber industry, anything. I think what we have to do is go down there and get a consensus. Before you're going to get anything passed, we're going to have to be sensitive to the rest of the state and their issues, before we go and shove it down their throat. And that's what's happening, and that's why they call us, you know, down there, they think we're all walking around in Birkenstocks and eat granola bars. I mean, that's the way they perceive us. But I wouldn't get communications with the rest of the state.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Fritz, would you like to have a rebuttal?
It has been a pleasure being on this stage with Mike Fahey in many different forums, and I've been down lobbying for school funding for the past 17 years, and will continue to do that. I also believe we need to lobby for Portland State University and PCC, and the community colleges here in our city, recognizing them as part of our economic development structure.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey, it's your turn to ask another candidate a question.
Let's see, what would be a good one? I'll ask Amanda. Amanda, do you think there is corruption in the city?
That's right. You know, that exact question was asked to me by the Republican Committee, and I said, "No." And then they, well, as she said, they said, "Is the city government corrupt?" And my answer was, "No." And then the question was rephrased to, "Is there corruption in city government?" And my answer was, "Yes." Because I think that part of what has happened over the past many years with, without public campaign financing, is that there has been a system of closure, and that there's been an insider culture, which is difficult for citizens to get into, and where favors are given, not because particularly of corruption, but because those are the people who are talking to the people inside City Hall. I'm really excited at the potential of being elected as the first public campaign finance candidate, because I'll be listening to the people of Portland that I've been working with in all 95 neighborhoods over the last 17 years, rather than affluent campaign contributors.
Thank you. Mr. Fahey, would you like a rebuttal?
No, I think she answered it pretty good.
Okay. Mr. Branham, it's your turn to ask a question of another candidate.
Sure. My question is for Mr. Bezenet. During this campaign, you've talked a great deal about our environment, which is, I would agree, an important focus. In addition, you've also mentioned schools and accountability as your primary areas of focus. So my question to you is, if you were sitting on the council today, and you had exclusive control over $5 million in new money, how would you spend it in ways that do not focus on the environment, but that do complement important city needs?
I would take $1 million and have better coordination between the city and school districts, or city and schools, to invest in safety issues around the schools, crosswalks, stop signs, that sort of thing, and also to better coordinate city services and, and school needs. I would take probably $2 million and invest it in my idea of a small business microloan program, because that will go an awful long way to setting up, and those would be allocated in, in microloans of, you know, $35,000 to $75,000 apiece. And then I think that I would take the last, where am I, $3 million? I would take, and I'm done.
Mr. Branham, would you like to make a rebuttal?
No, only that, that was a very tough question. I think you did a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Bezenet, it's your turn to ask a question of another candidate.
Well, since John asked me a question, I guess I'll ask him a question. Yeah, you've talked a lot about your commitment to the environment and to create green-collar jobs and a green-collar job corps program in the city. Who specifically would you put around the table to create such a program?
I think that's a great question. I appreciate it. So there are a number of folks I would bring around the table. Number one, I think leaders from the Office of Sustainable Development, chaired by Commissioner Saltzman. Secondly, I would bring folks from the Business Community, SBA, Small Business Advisory Council, folks from the APNBA, so Small Businesses in Neighborhood Business Associations. I would also bring leaders from the Oregon League of Minority, not Oregon League of Minority Voters, but Environmental Voters around the table. Clearly, they've been leaders in this industry, and I think having that collaborative environmental business community, as well as our schools and PCC, who are working with our young people to give them the kind of skills that they need, bringing those three groups around the table would be a great start.
Thank you. Would you like a rebuttal, Mr. Bezenet?
It is a good start, but I think that in order to move the program along more quickly, we need to make sure that John Miller, the former head of the Oregon Solar Energy Industry Association, is at the table. I also think that, rather than just leaders, I think that Susan Anderson, who is the director of the Office of Sustainable Development, needs to be around the table. Also, Robby Roberts and Don Furman, who are major wind industry developers, need to be around the table, and other specific people like that. I have the connections to actually make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, it's your turn to ask a question of one of the other candidates.
Well, thank you. Since the pattern appears to be asking our neighbors a question, I'll ask Charles a question. Charles, I've heard you through the campaign bemoan subsidies for million-dollar condos in the Pearl and South Waterfront. I served on a city club committee in the late '90s that looked at how Portland could achieve its residential housing goals, and we concluded that one of the best ways would be to focus new density in new, very dense neighborhoods, rather than infill in existing neighborhoods. Do you support that strategy?
Well, thank you very much. I definitely support the strategy of higher-density neighborhoods, like the Pearl District and the Southwest Waterfront, but it needs to be affordable. You know, it's like $500,000 condos for 600 square feet. I mean, try raising a family in a 600-square-foot condo, and I just don't think it's realistic. You know, we were made promises as a community that they would, you know, create some affordable housing there, and I don't think they've fulfilled it. And I think we need to hold them responsible to it. I think PDC is making some great improvements right now, in terms of, you know, potentially giving money to the Bureau of Housing and Community Development to create affordable housing out of that 30% set aside, and working with community partners. But we still have a long way to go, and, you know, we need more fairness and equity in, in the creation of the housing throughout the city of Portland.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, would you like a rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. Well, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, while we might all bemoan that the affordable housing in Southwest Waterfront has been delayed because of the problems we talked about earlier, the Pearl District has a very high percentage of affordable units that were part of the plan and were built on plan, and that the city investment in those districts goes not into subsidizing condos, but in creating the infrastructure, the streets, the sewer lines, in some cases, the streetcars. But, you know, the city investment is in building a vibrant neighborhood, not in subsidizing private condos.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, it's your opportunity to ask a question.
Great, thank you. I will ask Amanda, and I only regret that we're in striking distance, because I've got quite a question that broke online a couple, a couple days ago. It's concerning, a brochure that Amanda released a couple days ago, saying, you know, "Let's keep jobs here in Portland," and it says it throughout here several times, Amanda Fritz wants to see jobs stay in Portland. It turns out that the brochure was actually printed in Eugene, and $56,000 of printing in Eugene. In addition, there was another $54,000 that was spent outside of Portland as well, for a total of about $110,000 spent outside the city of Portland. What do you say about that?
I'm not surprised, question, and I'm not surprised that you asked it, Charles. I am proud to have done business with many Portland companies, and when I started out with my campaign team this time, I was very clear that the first choice was to be buying in Portland with Portland businesses, union businesses. And I could certainly go into the details of why the other choices were made. I did, and that strategy was indeed implemented, the top consultants in Portland. We met with them, they were not available. And so I'm in this campaign to win, and we went with their recommendations of who to work with. I'm proud to have done business with Portland companies, such as Hollywood Impress, which is a union company that does printing, and whose principal serves on the Linton Neighborhood Association, who I just visited with last, a couple of nights ago. So I will continue to focus on the important things at the $3 billion, $3 billion city budget, and make sure that we focus on those big-picture... and make sure that we focus on those big-picture things that really make a difference in Portland.
Thank you. We will now move to the final portion of the, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, your rebuttal. I'm sure you're anxious to make it.
Okay. Well, no. Amanda's been great this whole time. But I would just point out, you know, the Hollywood Impress was a couple hundred bucks. It doesn't compare to $110,000 spent outside of the City of Portland, while at the same time claiming, wanting to keep jobs and money here in Portland. You know, this is publicly financed money. I really believe that the money should have stayed here in the Portland area, especially if, if that's going to be a major platform of someone's campaign.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to the final portion of the program, a two-minute closing statement from each candidate. In their closing statement, we have asked each candidate to address the following questions. If you had your choice, which bureaus would you choose to have in your portfolio? Why? And what would you do with these bureaus? And we'll start with Mr. Chris Smith.
Well, thank you. And, you know, I'll go back to the reason I'm running, which is sustainability. And there are many bureaus where I would have the opportunity to improve the sustainability of the city. Obviously, with my transportation background, I would love to have the Office of Transportation and keep creating sustainable transportation choices here in Portland. I think there's a pretty strong chance the next mayor might want to keep the Transportation Bureau himself. So I need to have some other choices. I would be delighted to shepherd the Bureau of Planning through the Portland Plan. That's the 30-year update of our comprehensive plan, the once-in-a-generation opportunity to shape what Portland's future will be. And I think it's a, it's a perfect opportunity to build in sustainability from the ground up as a principle in that plan. With my background in citizen involvement, my passion for that, the Office of Neighborhood Involvement would be a bureau I could make a great contribution to. The Office of Sustainable Development, where I could help drive, you know, how we create our buildings and other sustainability, sustainability opportunities here in Portland. The Bureau of Environmental Services is another tremendous bureau that contributes to the greening of the city. And perhaps even the Office of Management and Finance. I do large software projects for a living at Xerox. And I see we have another computer system that's going over budget. I could probably make a contribution there. But, you know, I do uniquely, I think among the people here, couple a background as an activist with the policy knowledge needed to be a commissioner, with a private-sector business background managing a multi-billion-dollar enterprise at Tektronix and Xerox. And the City of Portland is a multi-billion-dollar enterprise, and we expect commissioners to be managers as well as policymakers. I believe I'm very well-suited to do that. I'd ask you to check out more about our campaign at citizensmith.us, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Lewis?
Great, thank you very much. You know, a major focus of my campaign has really been looking out for the little guy. And my whole philosophy is that government should be there to protect and take care of the people with the least in society. You know, the people with the most in society can really take care of themselves, I believe. And as part of that philosophy, I would love to have the Bureau of Housing and Community Development to help create more affordable housing here in the City of Portland. I think it's outrageous that seniors and families are being priced out of Portland. Over the last 10 years, we've lost 11,000 kids in our Portland public schools because families are being forced out of Portland. And I think we need to stop that. We need to reverse it. I don't want to end up a childless city here, especially with a child of my own on the way. So Bureau of Housing and Community Development would be my primary choice. In addition, I think we need to address some of the inequities in our transportation system. And I would love to be able to take a crack at, at PDOT. I kicked off my campaign filling in potholes on, on my dirt road, and would love to see the transportation dollars really spent equity throughout the City of Portland. You know, I've been endorsed by the Portland Tribune because they cited my ability to run a business. You know, Mike Fahey and I are the only people up here who have ever run a small business. I had 78 employees, the size of many bureaus. Many are smaller. And, you know, we pay a prevailing wage, $21 to $35 an hour. We provide free healthcare for all of our employees. We take care of people. And so that business experience is absolutely critical. I would invite you to check out our website. It's at charleslewis.com, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Amanda Fritz?
Well, in 157 years of having five members on the Portland City Council, we've had six women on the council. So frankly, I'll be happy to be at the table, even if my only assignment is the Office of Video and Film. But I am best prepared to be, to provide direction and oversight for environmental services, planning, development services, parks, neighborhood involvement, and the police. And those are because of my extensive involvement in parks and recreation issues, in watershed issues. I was the co-founder of the Tri-Creek Watershed Council. I've served on the board of the Coalition for a Liveable Future since 2004, endorsed by Mike Halk and many other environmentalists. And because I was on the Planning Commission for seven years, I can work, I'm best prepared to lead the Portland Plan over the next three years, and also to solve some of the nitty-gritty of the regulations that don't work in development services and that need to work better. Office of Neighborhood Involvement, I've been immersed in for several years and was on the task force of neighborhood involvement in 1995. And so I would love to be involved with both neighborhood involvement and the police, because I believe we have a missed opportunity over the last four years when those two bureaus have been in the same portfolio, to increase trust and respect, and to support community policing in the way that it was envisioned when it, when it was started and the way it needs to go. As a psychiatric nurse, I've dealt with some of the most, and cared for, some of the most vulnerable and stressed-out folks in our community. I understand what police officers go through when they're out on the job, fearing for their own lives, fearing for other people's lives. And I believe I'm uniquely qualified to lead the city in resolving some of the issues that face our society with respect to the police and mentally ill folks in the society. I will work with the community. I will work with the county and with TRIMET, with the school boards. I have a proven record of forging collaboration and bringing people together to work together for the good of Portland, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Mike Fahey?
I think with my background, being a journeyman carpenter, knowing how to build things, and I've estimated $45 million Navy overhaul job. I know how to read plans, so I'd take the Housing and Community Development for the cost and transportation. The transportation, the decisions that's been made here lately on transportation, you know, makes about as much sense as letting the trunk monkey drive in a NASCAR race, because, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. But that, I think the two of those, and they both fit into having affordable housing and transportation all, what are you going to need to keep in a business environment in this town? I mean, they're talking about gridlock on streets and stuff. Well, the reason is because the freeways are backed up, and they're taking all the side streets, you know, like MLK and the rest of the streets. So I think if we get transportation, somebody that knows how to look at a plan and engineer it, and I guarantee I know how to figure the cost, and there won't be the overruns. Maybe, maybe 5%, but we'll see. Not 25. But I think that'd be my two bureaus, because I think that's what I've been trained in, and I understand the concept. So my granddaughter says, "I understand the concept, Poppy." So I understand the concept.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Mr. Branham, your closing statement?
Sure, thank you. Again, my name is John Branham, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I think it's important, in terms of the bureaus, to acknowledge what's realistic. And for example, Chris noted this, in terms of transportation, I think we can honestly assume that Sam's going to keep PDOT. As for Charles, Charles desperately wants to get his hands on PDC and, and BHCD. But it's also clear that, in terms of PDC, Sam's going to keep that too. And in terms of BHCD, that bureau is going with the person who assumes Eric Stensay. And I think in terms of Jeff's interests, I assume we'll hear, but those are in the Office of Sustainable Development. I think it's quite likely that Dan Saltzman's going to keep those. I, on the other hand, am most interested in the Police Bureau, the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and BES, Bureau of Environmental Services. In public, Sam has noted that if I win, he would strongly consider assigning the Police Bureau to me because of my competence and my significant ability to bring Portlanders from diverse backgrounds together. In terms of ONI, I've been a neighborhood chair, and I would love the opportunity to work on the other side of the table and support our neighborhood associations. And as for BES, while it's not the sexiest bureau, it's critical in our work to preserve our environment. And further, among many other things I believe I've proven on this campaign, one of them is that I can take a lot of crap. But seriously, I'm running because Portland needs a city commissioner who has a diverse set of experiences, who brings a fresh perspective to leading, and who can work well with Portlanders from all backgrounds. I've been endorsed by the Sentinel and the Scanner and many city club members. And so as you cast your vote, I would encourage you to consider not who has served on the greatest number of city advisory commissions or spent the greatest number of years battling our city, but choose instead for the person who will bring the most passion, brightest vision, and freshest perspective to City Hall. The choice is clear. It's John Branham for City Council, and I'd be honored to have your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Branham. Mr. Bissonette, your closing statement?
Thank you, and thank you again for the opportunity to address you today. I'm running because I do believe that Portland can be a city that works better for all of us. And I want to utilize both my experience and track record of success to make a contribution to making our city better. I would seek to lead the following bureaus. First is the Office of Cable Communication and Franchise Management, because I have the experience working with the Citizens Utility Board on telecommunications issues to make sure that cable companies are accountable to consumers. I would like to lead the Water Bureau, because I have the consumer advocacy experience to make sure that our water rates are fair. I'd like to lead the Office of Sustainable Development, because I have the extensive background and success in clean energy issues to enhance our clean energy sector and simultaneously reduce our city's energy usage. And lastly, I'd like to lead the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, because I have 20 years of experience as a community organizer, enhancing civic engagement and making sure that neighborhoods feel a part of processes and, and that also that all neighborhoods can feel a part of the city. I know that we have a lot of challenges that we're facing as a city. And I want to be on the City Council, because I have the record of success to deal effectively with those issues. I know that we can listen better to neighborhoods, because I have been a community organizer for 20 years. I know that we can bring diverse constituencies together, because that is what I've been doing at CUB and the Fair and Clean Energy Coalition, working on positive clean energy policy at the state level. I know that we can create green jobs, because I've been developing and defending funding for energy efficiency and renewable resources. And I know that we can put aggressive progressive agendas through the political process, because that's what I've been doing for many years. Again, thank you for allowing me to be here today, and I ask for your vote for Jeff Bissonette for Portland City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, a good news, bad news situation. The good news is we have six very articulate and qualified candidates. The bad news is, you get to only vote for one of them. I think it's important to see, if you've attended any of the debates, and this one, why city club is important for civic education and engagement. And in closing, I just want to remind you, there is an envelope on each table. Help us to continue providing these great Friday forums. Finally, I'd like to thank Dr. Sheila Martin, our moderator, Ted K., our timekeeper in the city club, members on our questioners panel, and who prepared these thoughtful questions. And finally, our candidates, Jeff Bissonette, John Branham, Mike Fahey, Amanda Fritz, Charles Lewis, and Chris Smith. We appreciate their interest in serving us and for giving us a lively forum today. We're adjourned.